The one brief comment about opening this work session is this is very important for the council. And certainly I've been through a number of these work sessions now, but it's also important to the public because we always are getting questions about our parks and our plants and the depth of work that goes behind the planning can't be understated. And so this is a good educational piece for the public to show the staff's work. And at some point, I do hope to drill down on heritage since we've been kind of watching that for about five years now. Anyway, Rocky, I understand you're going to be making the presentation?
Yes, sir, I will start. All right. Thank you. For the record, Rocky Houston, Division Manager for Parks and Lands in Public Works here at Clark County, and my esteemed colleague, David Stipe, our Planning and Development Manager. Next slide. I want to thank you for allowing us to come today and provide an overview of our capital improvement plan. To start off with, we're going to go through our planned public process. So of course, we start this in the fall of the preceding year, looking at what our needs are, assessing our assets, and moving that forward to sort of an initial draft engagement with our Parks Advisory Board, which occurred on July 11th, 2023. From there, we went through a 30-day public comment period from August 21st to September 22nd. We brought it back to the Parks Advisory Board in the middle of that process to allow a open public meeting for people to come and provide comments directly to the Parks Advisory Board and staff. And then last night, we had a Parks Advisory Board meeting that allowed us to move that draft plan forward to council after the work session for the future hearing. The work session is today where we'll over review that plan, and then we plan to come back in November for hearing for adoption of this iteration of our capital plan. Next slide, please. So as a review is that every six years, we complete a pros plan. As part of that pros plan historically and moving forward is a capital plan, capital facilities plan, and a 20-year sort of look forward in regards to projects to meet the recreational needs and safety needs for the community members. We brought that plan forward in April of 2022 to council to get adopted, and that became sort of the process for us and moving through that. The pros plan is consistent with RCW 36.70A, which is the Growth Management Act, which provides that 20-year capital facilities plan and that six-year capital improvement plan. Essentially, it allows us to determine what projects do we need and do we have the resources to meet those needs. And then we look at the gap analysis, of course, to continue to move forward. During the pros plan, we discussed a transition to an annual capital planning process instead of every six years. This is our second iteration of bringing that forward to council as this annual update. So this models kind of how the Transportation Improvement Plan is, where we come forward every year with the budget as well as that five-year forecast in the future. That allows us to be more responsive to changes in regards to community needs, our resources. So if our funding or staffing goes down, we're able to kind of manage those expectations on an annual basis. Next slide. From the format that we provided last year, we made a few minor changes. We'll review how we've broken it out and kind of highlight a couple of those changes. So for our capital improvement plan, we have preventive maintenance as a sort of our first category. Technically, that's not part of our capital budget. That's part of our operation budget. But again, philosophically, as I want to make sure that we're making it known and making it a priority, that we're trying to extend the useful life of those existing assets we have to not create a major maintenance or replacement requirement. So a lot of those things are painting, replacing boards on benches, paving overlays, patches for asphalt or concrete, those sort of things like that. Sometimes that's replacing wood chips or surfacing in playgrounds, those sort of things. Our major maintenance is where we start to transfer into our capital budget. Major maintenance is classified as that replacement of an existing asset. So it's met its useful life. It's now a creating a maintenance issue or a safety issue, and so we were replacing that structure oftentimes with like, but based off of the needs of the park at the time or the community that sometimes are enhancements to that. But that would be like replacing a restroom, replacing a whole field for a sports field, things of that nature. Next slide, please. This year, we changed up our capital improvement projects and divided those into two categories for a real key reason. So the first is we now have what we call stewardship capital improvement plan. So we're trying to articulate is that we have existing parks and we're adding assets to us, we're creating new things. That does two things for us is it lightens our maintenance in regards to a whole new park being done, as well as we have a lot of new recreational needs in the community and master plans that we haven't fully developed. And so we're trying to continue to meet those needs by making those improvements in those existing assets. And what historically was our capital improvement plan, which is creating new parks. So as the community grows within the Greater Clark Park District, we have a level of service requirement of developing to meet that need. And this is where we are building those new parks, such as Curtain Creek Park, Cozy Camp Park that we constructed this year, et cetera. Next slide. One item that's not on here, and I'm just going to point out that you'll see in the spreadsheets in the capital plan, is our parks and programming planning. So we have planning that we do for the pros plan, system planning. We do planning for legacy lands, et cetera, and we sort of call that out to make sure it's distinct and unique so that people can see those planning efforts. We had it sort of tucked into our capital projects in the past, and so we wanted to highlight that out separately. When we are doing master plans or going to construction, that's still going to be found within the capital planning process. But there's a lot of other planning efforts that we do to meet the needs of the community and to have a successful parks program. Land acquisitions, we divided those out this year by program. So acquiring new land is something we do for our Parks Department to meet those recreational needs primarily in the Greater Clark Park District. Also, legacy lands is a large engine for acquiring conservation lands and resource lands. And so we had those combined into one category last year. We wanted to pull those out for clarity in case there are questions on it. We have it sort of separated out and make that different funding and those different priorities identified. And lastly, we have equipment and vehicles. So this is when we're reviewing our current fleet and as we add on new assets, this is the acquisition of new equipment and vehicles, not replacement of existing. So if we needed a new special kind of rake, motorized, whatever it is, that comes very expensive for sports turf or something like this, we'd be looking at. Our staff says that they'd like this other tool, this other piece of equipment to meet their needs. This is where we'd be looking for those dollars to be coming from. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to David to review our rubric and the plan itself. David?
Thank you. Thanks again to the council for taking the time to go through our capital plan with us, our draft capital plan. Again, my name's David Stipe. I'm the capital, I'm the Planning and Development Manager for Parks and Lands. So a lot of the structure in this current draft plan is very similar to the previous plan. There are some key notable differences, as Rocky mentioned earlier, but there's also a lot more clarity in sort of the order in which we accomplish some of our tasks. Next slide, please. We've extended our prioritization process that we used in the previous adopted plan for park development to our major maintenance category and our preventative maintenance category. The way we were able to accomplish that is we've been able to complete an inventory and assessment of the entire park system this year, which was something that Rocky and I set out to do when we both started here at Clark County. That is complete at this point, so we aren't working on sort of the known projects or the squeaky wheel projects because we now know what we need to do and we've prioritized it. We've used this prioritization matrix that is outlined in the slideshow to do that prioritization of those major maintenance and preventative maintenance projects. It's very, it's a very common matrix that's used for prioritization of public facilities. It's based on needs, park user impact, which is our DEI lens when we're evaluating the facility needs for the park district, for the entire county, as a matter of fact. Return on investment leverage, are we spending money on facilities that generate revenue? Are we spending our capital dollars or our maintenance dollars on facilities that we have partners that also bring funds to the table? Or do we have grants available? Operational impact, are we spending our major maintenance and preventative maintenance money and our capital improvement money to improve facilities so their maintenance becomes less of a burden on our operations staff? And then stewardship impacts. And stewardship impacts for me goes two directions. If we're proposing to develop or improve something that has a negative impact on a habitat area, it may score low in this stewardship category. If it actually solves a problem where we have some negative impacts on a sensitive area, then it might score high in this category. So we use this prioritization for both capital projects and major maintenance projects. So when you look at the plan at this point, for the next six years, we know what we're doing down to the project as opposed to the last plan where we had our major maintenance became more of a lump sum as we looked out into the future. Next slide, please. Some additional notable changes in the current draft plan in preventative maintenance, we added bridges, piers, and boat launches preservation category. With the addition of some technical staff in the planning and development section, we embarked on updating the inventory of our bridges and realized that we have 56 bridges in service. Majority of those are pedestrian bridges, but they still need to be inspected and maintained. And we've been working with our Public Works Bridge Engineer, Elizabeth Gregg, on a process to evaluate those bridges and prioritize them for maintenance or major maintenance or even replacement. In the previous capital plan, we had a 10% year-over-year growth in our preventative maintenance program. That was, that was applied on my part just in reflection of not only the growth in our system, our park system, but also inflation at the time. And we flattened that out to 5% for this draft plan. So our preventative maintenance program doesn't grow quite as rapidly over the six years as it did previously. I mentioned that we shifted to known priorities as opposed to, as opposed to, we shifted from known priorities to an actual nearly exhaustive list of known projects. We changed the playground surfacing replacement program to a playground replacement program. In the previous plan, we were proposing to replace playground surfacing and not necessarily the equipment. And as we got into the planning for that, that program, for lack of a better term, we realized that it didn't make a whole lot of sense to replace the playground surfacing and then come in two or three or five years later and try to replace the playground that it surrounds. It just creates some inefficiencies in the process. And then we shifted the Lackamas Regional Park Bridge from a repair to a replacement through bridge evaluation. We've, we came to the conclusion that the bridge is subject to sudden failure. So we've been working with the city of Canmas and Fire and Rescue because they all use the bridge to access various parts of that regional park to see some vehicle operation on the bridge, and we're working with them to address emergency access issues and build a new bridge, find a different way to the north part of the regional park area there. So that's an ongoing project.
I'm not sure which bridge you're talking about.
So you have to go sort of into the heart of the park. It's not one of the bridges that's out by Lackamas Lake or Round Lake. There's a double railcar bridge, so it's not a railroad bridge.
So if you're coming from the east side, there's no sort of access road that came down off of there that then would cross the creek, and that's where the bridge is located. So it's about a half mile in from the east boundary. The city uses that to come in to do maintenance as well to the levee or dam. So it's sort of on the east side, but it does, the trail connects back in with around Round Lake.
So it's the location that when the water's really running, there's like rapids there where that bridge is? I think, okay, I think I know where you're talking about.
That's a 20-foot wide bridge that is crosses Lackamas Creek.
Yeah. So what's wrong with it?
So it's a railcar bridge. So in a lot of rural settings, they used railcars to build bridges, and it's just so badly rusted at this point that the steel actually looks like a croissant. It's delaminating quite badly, and it's subject to sudden failure. A lot of times, the railcars are no longer functional as railcars because they can't carry the loads that they were designed to carry, and they become surplus, and they're purchased by individuals and Public Works Departments and use as bridges. So the provenance of the bridge is sort of hard to tie down. And so we've had a bridge engineer do an inspection and a load rating on it and suggested that we stop using it for any vehicular traffic. The city was going to use it to bring a crane across this coming summer to replace the headgates on the dam. And so, as I mentioned, we're looking for a way to come across the homeowners association parcel where they have an easement to access the north side of the property so we don't have to put back a quite as big a bridge when we construct a new bridge. It'll be more of a 10-ton bridge that we could drive a half-ton truck across, not a big hook truck or a crane. So saves us money, provides us with a different access point that's overland as opposed to crossing the creek. All the things you learn when you're out doing inventory work. So next slide, please. Some noticeable changes, again, Rocky mentioned the stewardship capital improvement category in the draft plan. This is a new category. I first discussed it with Rocky because I'd like to, I'd like our capital plan to reflect that we're investing in our existing parks with capital dollars, making those park improvements, finishing those master plans on about an even footing with developing new parks in the system. So we're not just constantly looking at the borders of the park system. So that put us in a situation where Harmony Sports Complex, which is an existing facility, has shifted to the stewardship capital category, but it also has shifted to 20, construction in 2023, obviously it didn't happen this year, to 2025. We've had, we've had at least one conversation with council about this project, and it boiled down to budget and making sure that we had the scope of the project lined out appropriately and the budget to do the work. And so we've right-sized the project, and we have the budget to move forward, and we've re-engaged the consultant in getting the drawings completed, and then we'll move to permitting sometime in '24.
And as an update, the planned construction date, knock on wood, is, will be in January of 2025 and be completed before the end of June '25 so that we have that new entrance and stoplight, as well as the existing entrance improved and a little over 200 parking stalls created that will all be paved, and also setting up a framework for future phases for the Harmony Sports Association.
So we're excited to actually have that moving again. And while the delay has been unfortunate, it has created some opportunities with the city because they've been moving forward with their, their planning for the frontage. And so there may be some cost sharing associated with the frontage improvements, which is beneficial to our project. I believe we've mentioned that we received a $1.365 million grant from the State Department of Commerce. Our representative's office approached us and asked us if we had a project that if we had more money, we could do more. Of course, we said, yes, we do. We pitched them three different projects and told them that the Klein Line Pond area was our priority of the three because of the bridge issues at that property as well. We've been doing bridge inspection on it and have identified some issues that need to be addressed on that bridge. But we also identify a number of accessibility improvements that could be done to the park. And so we partnered with our representative staff to come up with a program to do a very significant accessibility improvement to the Klein Line Pond area of the park. Things like formalizing the ADA route from the parking lot to the park, which is not per code at this point. And then we have some various regional and community park renovations or improvement projects, again, to recognize that we have a system of parks that we need to continue to pay attention to.
I'd just like to take a moment to thank all of you and the councilor's office staff in helping us work to, with the state on getting the project off the ground, the application submitted and that process. So again, thank you. This is going to be a big benefit to the park and the community.
So in the capital category, again, the new park projects, the park projects that are sort of identified in the pros plan as in park districts where there's a, where there's a level of service need, we shifted the Curtain Creek Community Park project from '23 to '25. Again, a funding issue, working through the phasing process internally. So we're going to be doing a first phase of that project. So one of the fields there, one of the shelters there, the playground, the sport courts, and part of the parking lot. The other field will be done in a future phase. And so we're, we're under contract to move through completion of those drawings, bid it in the, bid it in the fall and winter of '24 and start construction in '25. We've added some funds to the Heritage Farm Public Access Improvement Project. We added an additional $620,000 to this draft plan as compared to the previous draft plan. That's in recognition of a lot of opportunity that has come, is coming about through the steering committee conversation on the sustainability plan and a recognition that we really need to make some public access improvements there.
And as an update for the planning sustainability plan and the other projects there, just take this moment to talk about that. So the wetland project with clean water is continuing to move forward and get to permitting phase. As that timeline gets determined for construction, that will slide this access project to occur after that project's completed. So that, I wouldn't say it's on skids, but it's, we have, it's timing it after, after that project's completed. We've drafted a nine-step to come for a work session, and I don't know, I don't believe we've submitted it yet, but based off the schedule that we all have this next couple of months, that'd probably be in early '24 when we bring up an update. So we are finalizing the draft plan and the options. We have a steering committee coming up next month to kind of review those options. We will then go out to another public meeting, an open house, to get comment on those options, and then come back to finalize another comment period on the final draft plan. And we were hoping to have you, bring you back that information before we went to the final plan for that work session. So the three options that we have is always looking at what we're currently doing as an option. Through the feedback that we have looked at, the information from WSU's research, our own work through the planning process, we looked at a NGO sort of managed operation as one of those other potential options. And the other one is sort of an agri-park, which that would have, it's a model that's used locally in other jurisdictions as well as nationwide, where we still have that focus on agriculture, education, the core things that are still occurring there, but also continues to improve that interpretation and education and really the adoption of the existing master plan to have that public access improved. With that, looks at different funding streams, different partnerships as we move forward, looking at the ideas of preserving that focus on agricultural via through future actions by council, whether that's a conservation easement or other elements there. And through this process, I think we've identified some potential other partners who may want to come and do some of the programming at the farm, you know? And I think we are continuing to move forward to reboot our Heritage Farm advisory team and get them engaged with our team as we move forward with that. So I think we've got a solid framework, a lot of information, like any planning process is taking us a lot longer than we want it to, but at the same time, we want to make sure that we've got all that information in there in a way that honors the input that we received and continues to create the core things that we want is improved public access, look at our sustainability for funding and operations there at the site so that my grandchildren, their grandchildren can still have this as a resource there.
So to put a bow on Heritage Farm, Rocky mentioned that that project has slid, and also that it's, the intention is it falls in line with the closeout of the wetland project so we don't have competing permit applications that are confusing, you know, confusing the permit timeline. And so the design work for Heritage Farm Public Access Improvements will likely start in '25 and be done, be completed in '27 because the wetland improvements will likely not be completed till '25. So the other notable difference is we've added Cougar Creek Woods Community Park Development back into the capital plan through conversations with our community partners and research, just learning our job and the history of the Parks Department and the development of the park system. We recognized that there were some previous partnerships and some previous community investments made on developing plans for that particular property. And so while it, while it did not rise up to the top of the development list when we did our prioritization process, there's already been community dialogue and investment. So it is back in our, sort of the top end of our roster, for lack of a better term. Next slide, please. So this is a So this is a sort of a heads up comparison of our 24 forecasted budget from the 23 CIP and our and our 24 draft budget. So in 20 in the 23 to 28 CIP, we anticipated that we would be spending around $9 million, broken out into the various categories in in 24, and that number has has inflated. But there's a couple of specific reasons why. And if you look at the the categories individually, you'll notice that there's quite a bit more money in the Legacy Lands Acquisition Plan for 24 as well as the Park Land Acquisition. And we've front loaded some of those funds. They're available in the in the various accounts because we want to be more flexible and be able to move a little bit quicker in property acquisitions as the opportunities arise. And so if you dig into the the plan sort of front to back, you'll notice that the Park Land Acquisition money is all allocated in 24 and 25 by the different PIF districts. So it's roughly half in 24, roughly half in 25. So we just need to remember to carry those things over if we don't identify properties to acquire, but it gives us an opportunity to at least try to compete with folks who have a shorter timeline for acquiring property. You'll also notice a little bit of a difference in major maintenance, and that's because we've added some big projects like replacing both sports field surfaces at Luke Jensen over the next two years. They're both both the sports turf fields have reached their useful life and need to be replaced. And those are the notable differences. I'm happy to go into more detail if you're if you're interested in, you know, the the specifics of the numbers. We can stop at each slide if you'd like to and I can help clarify.
I have a quick question on that. As far as the funding for some of these projects, would that include like the large grant that we got from the state? And so we don't really know all of the funds that are coming, but we've received some windfalls.
That's a great point, Counselor Marshall. The the money in the capital plan, there's an other category. If you're looking at the if you're looking at the detail and the larger spreadsheets in your in your paper copy, the other category is is primarily grant funding or partner funding. And so that $1.365 million that we that we received from the state is in there. And then there's also some speculation in there for RCO grant funding that we might we might pursue. We're meeting later this week to make our RCO sort of grant pursuit list. There are always opportunities for us to 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 receive grant funding. So, yeah, that that number's in there as well, so thank you for.
And there is a later slide where we will break it down by funding stream as well to help illustrate that.
Yeah. So next slide, please. This is a an overall comparison of the adopted plan versus the draft plan that's before you today. And you'll notice that the adopted plan was 77 million and this this plan has come down a little bit to 74 million. And it's partly because we're recognizing what we what we have the capacity to tackle. And and that's just a simple fact that we have, you know, staffing capacity and we have permitting timelines that that we that we deal with. And so it's come down a little bit. And the sort of order of operations has has mixed a little bit as well. Some noticeable difference, as you'll see here, is the major maintenance category went from 22 to 12, and that's because some of the major maintenance projects in the previous plan shifted to the capital, the stewardship capital improvement category because they were capital projects in existing parks. And the new capital development number dropped, and that's again because projects like Harmony shifted from the new capital category to that stewardship capital category. So that's why there's some number fluctuation going on there. The Legacy Lands number is a slight bit higher, and I I can provide you with better feedback on that, but I would have to connect with Kevin Tyler about that if you want specific specifics on why that number's a bit higher. And the Legacy Lands number is a little bit higher, and that's primarily the pardon me, the Park Land Acquisition number is a little bit higher, and that's because we identified a property adjacent to Heritage Farm that so we went from a generic number in that PIF district to a specific number, and so that number's a slight bit higher. So next slide, please. And then we get into the the minutia of the where the money comes from. As you're aware, but I'll run through it because I believe that we have three new counselors from the last time we we went through our capital plan. We have real estate excise funds that we that we access for certain types of projects. We have our Metropolitan Park District Funds, which we utilize for major maintenance, our preventative maintenance and some park system planning. We have the Park Impact Funds that we use for acquisition and capital improvements. And then we have a small general fund category that's primarily focused on our regional parks, preventative maintenance and Heritage Farm. And then we we break out our preventative maintenance, 65% MPD, 35% general fund, recognizing that we can't use the MPD funds for maintenance on regional parks. The Conservation Futures is is the Legacy Lands Acquisition Fund, and then the other is grant dollars. The Stewardship Capital Improvement, $2.57 million, is grant funds for Harmony Sports Complex. And then the other one is escaping me. I apologize, but there's another grant that we have, oh, the $1.365 million for Klein And that park system and site planning, $500,000, is money that will be used, I believe it's timber fund money, for master planning at Camp Bonneville and Green Mountain. Next slide, please. So I won't go through this in line by line. This is just a rundown of our new park and stewardship development list based on the prioritization that you that we've discussed previously. We brought our prioritization process to council, I believe, earlier this year. This is just a reminder and an update of the development year for some of these properties and and some of the existing community and neighborhood park stewardship projects. And this is what what we are shooting for out to 2030. And then the next two slides are, next slide, please, are the other seven, the remainder of the 17 undeveloped properties that we have. Final slide, please. So that's the sort of breakdown. Once we get past 2030, it's really hard for me to see that far out. It's beyond the next update to the pros plan, which will which will identify different level of service issues that we need to address and we'll go through this prioritization process again. And so that first timeline note just recognizes the fact that this prioritization list may change as we update the pros plan. And we will be also just Whipple Creek, while it's while it's a existing regional natural area park, we will be evaluating it to perhaps add some community park assets to it because of the growth of the urban growth boundary in that direction. And so that's why it's why it's on the list as a potential park that needs a master plan.
I believe there's a typo on that last, number three. I believe you're referencing Whipple Creek Regional Park, not Whipple Creek Hollow. So just to clarify that. We do have another asset that's called Whipple Creek Hollow Natural Area, which is a legacy land property. It is adjacent to Salmon Creek Community Club Neighborhood Park in the Mount Vista neighborhood. So just to to clarify that that typo that got by us there.
My apologies. A slide, please. So Rocky mentioned earlier that we had a 30 day comment period and we had a we advertised a public meeting with the Parks Advisory Board for comment on the draft plan. During that period, we received one email from from a citizen regarding the limiting public access at Heritage Farm. I've included a copy of the email in the back of the plan in Appendix D, I believe, and my response to that that citizen. We, as I mentioned, we went to and Rocky mentioned, we went to the September Parks Advisory Board Meeting for an advertised public meeting, and we received one comment at that public meeting from Dr. Allen that focused on development prioritization, PIF fund management and usage. And I provided a summary as well in the appendix. We met with the Clark County Executive Horse Council during that period to talk to them about some potential major maintenance improvements at Whipple Creek that that aren't in this current plan, but they'd like us to consider in future iterations of this plan, making an investment in in that property. And they also wanted to make sure that we continued to include them in the master planning efforts at some of our larger facilities. They specifically mentioned Camp Bonneville and Green Mountain. And we met with the Four Creeks Neighborhood Association, and the reason that we met with the Four Creeks Neighborhood Association is because we made a change to the plan. We're going to shift our neighborhood plan development in that PIF district from the Salmon Creek Community Club property, where we have a draft master plan, to the Mount Vista property, which is a quarter mile, quarter of a mile away. There are some habitat and legacy lands restrictions on the Salmon Creek Community Club property that will limit the the types of facilities that we'll be able to get permitted and constructed there. And there are also some site distance and and safety issues with the the roadway. It's a very constrained frontage with a with a collector level road that that we met out there with our transportation folks and just felt like having a whole lot of folks trying to park on the street because we don't put parking in our neighborhood parks and crossing that road to 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 come to the park would create a safety issue that that when when included in the the habitat and legacy land restrictions, we decided that the Mount Vista property was a much better place to serve that neighborhood, and it still serves it very close by. And it has better better frontage improvement already and better access than the Salmon Creek property. So those are the notable differences. The Four Creeks Neighborhood Association was appreciative of the the check in with them and and generally agreed that it was a better a better place to develop a neighborhood park. That doesn't mean that we won't develop facilities at the Salmon Creek Community Club property. It just means that that we likely won't have a playground there and a sport court. It'll be more natural resource based improvements focused on connecting people to Whipple Creek at that location with the potential to connect to Whipple Creek Hollow, Whipple Creek Hollow in the future. So they they share a corner. They don't share a boundary. So we would have to work on an easement to make a trail connection to Whipple Creek Hollow. Last slide.
We want to thank you for still being with us through this sometimes dry financial assessment of all the great cool things that parks provide for the community, and we're definitely open to any questions you have at this time.
So I would note that the chair is not on. Michelle Belkott on?
Yes, she is on.
Yes, I'm on.
So anyway, thank you for the presentation and kind of where I started in the very brief introduction, and this really highlighted the depth and breadth of all the work you do. All positive, all necessary, and all very welcome by the public. Let me go to the counselors and see if there are questions. I I have a lot. Sue?
Thank you. I have a few myself. I have a question about Cozy Camp because I've heard from a constituent whose property borders the Cozy Camp, and she was advocating for some fencing along Northeast 27th Avenue because apparently people are, and I'm not that familiar with the camp myself, but people are accessing through a wetland area. And I know there's prob there's been some recent planting that maybe was intended to be a buffer there, but I wonder if you could comment on that.
So, yes, so on the in the street numbers are not going to come up to my head, so I apologize. I know on the north side of the park, which is 175th, we are having a fence installed that will separate it from that private drive that'll go down and help delineate the park boundary there to hopefully eliminate some of the parking on that side. I know that's not the corner in reference, but just so we're completing the fencing on that corner. On the that other corner, 27th where the neighborhood is, and it is, I think it's about two acres of wetland there. I thought there was already a galvanized fence in place that is in that corner. I'll have to double check on that one small corner between the wooden fences that I know are one neighborhood and and another property. There's that one corner that I'm questioning galvanized fence, but I believe there's a chain link fence already there. There is trees planted along our pathway to help eventually will help provide additional screen. Our management of that wetland area is going to be minimal vegetation management. We will be, we got permission to go in there and from a fuels reduction is mow that once a year. Typically, we can't do mowing in a in a wetland area. So I know those are the things. I know we have looked at the alignment and from at least one one neighbor and some some screening questions she has. And so we've we've been looking at the distances and the spatial to try to to see if any additional modifications to our site plan is needed or if when our plantings mature and those other things, because it's a few hundred feet, I want to say there's about 300 feet from that property line to where we have active use. And so we have sort of a buffer, and if people are getting in there, you know, from a design perspective, we continue to try to make reduce access into that area to preserve it as it is.
It does sound like people are getting in there.
Counselor Marshall, there's a there's an opening in the in the five foot chain link fence along the western boundary of the the park that does access the wetland. It's a remnant and it it will be closed by our by our maintenance staff. It's a it's a project that they were planning to get to in the fall. And so that 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 old informal access will be closed, so you won't be able to enter the park through the wetland.
Great. Thanks for that.
No problem.
And then on page eight, where you're talking about flattening the annual budget from 10 to 5%, which sounds significant to me, and I'm just wondering how you did that or are things being sacrificed as a result of that or efficiencies found?
To Counselor Marshall, the inflation was only applied to the preventative maintenance portion of of the budget, not the not the entire budget itself. And so we didn't flatten the entire budget by 5%, just the preventative maintenance category. And the preventative maintenance category is And the preventative maintenance category is, it's a fund that we use to address things like hazard trees, modest resurfacing of parking lots. Frequently, what will happen is we'll evaluate a project and it'll be, the cost will be too significant for the preventative maintenance program. And so it will become a major maintenance project in the next capital budget. And so we just have limited capacity to do dozens of small projects. And typically, that's a fund that we use to either partner with our operations staff to help them purchase materials or we hire a contractor through the limited small works process that we use to have a pavement contractor onsite for a small project.
So the intent of the 10% was to maintain our current service level in regards to addressing preventive maintenance. We've identified that if those scary jumps in quotes from contractors and materials are starting to settle out, and as such, I think our tea leaves that we're reading right now is because that's settling out, we've reduced that number to a little bit higher than sort of the standard, 2% or 3% to a 5%. We're going to continue to monitor it. But again, that's, we set up some numbers to try to dedicate to make sure we were addressing some of those preventive maintenance items. And the intent was to try to keep that level at a per inflation at the current service level moving forward.
And the way we know sort of what the bidding environment is doing as we work with our construction management section, we have access to all their bid tabs so we can see how competitive the bids for materials are. And we also have our, as I mentioned, our limited small works and our small works process that we work with purchasing on. And we're seeing quite a few more bidders entering into the process, the competitive process for projects. An example would be, I believe we received nine bids for a concrete project recently, whereas two years ago, we would have received maybe one or none. And so the bidding environment is getting more competitive as the housing market, I believe, slows.
Good news and bad news there. Thank you.
Yes, sure.
And just thinking of legislative priorities and we'll be talking about what our legislative priorities might be in the upcoming session, I think pretty soon. So if there are discrete projects or priorities, I think we'd welcome hearing about that, not just maybe from all departments, including yours. So now would be a good time to think about that. And then just finally, this is really kind of a broad thought. You know, with the update of the comprehensive plan and the directive to address climate change and adaptation and those sorts of things, I really look to parks as a potential to mitigate some of the impacts. So I don't know if this is thought about within this plan or going forward, thinking about that, because trees and shade, neighborhood parks can be, and really the larger regional legacy lands kinds of projects can all be part of that adaptation.
Yeah, I think we're, Counselor, thanks for the question. Looking at it a couple of different ways and how parks can be a part of the opportunity to solution. So as you know, the state has started a new program with DNR. City of Camas, I think, received one of those first sort of grants or programs, looking at canopy. We are working with them, so David's going to be kind of on that team, looking at that. They're going to be assessing some of our properties in that area. So we're going to be learning in regards to some of those initiatives. In addition, David and his team has been looking at ways to, as we move forward with playgrounds, looking at shade options, which isn't something we thought a lot of in the Northwest in the past, as well as trees, increasing our canopy in some of our parks and trying to direct it in a lot of different ways. So we have a draft policy that'll be coming forward to you guys in a few months on our memorials program and trying to direct where people are looking at memorial trees instead of memorial benches. And so it's just these little small things that continue to create a patchwork as we do stuff. We have a volunteer program, work party, I think, coming up, is it on the 15th? It's coming up here soon at one of our parks where we had to remove some hazard trees. And so now, again, another way to engage with the community and replant trees and other vegetation and increasing a lot more trees in those areas versus the neighborhood we did take down. So I think we're looking strategically at every phase of our operation, trying to look at how we, every drop equals a full bucket as we move forward.
So to Counselor Marshall, if I can pile on to Rocky's comment a little bit. Our vegetation management program, which is a preventative maintenance category, over the last two years, we've spent a whole lot of that money cutting things down, addressing hazard trees and just sort of a backlog of hazard trees. But over time, my hope is that we spend an equal balance between removals and replacements and evaluating not just our canopy, but our other understory vegetation as it matures. A lot of the vegetation in our parks could use a little replacement. And so the three, we actually have three volunteer planting projects that are coming up in November. We've worked with our volunteer coordinator to work with some schools. And then one is just an open sign-up for the public to come to a park and plant 150 to 175 combination of trees and native vegetation, primarily in the understory and the undeveloped parts of our parks. So those parks are Jorgensen Woods, Lacamas Regional Park, and Tiger Tree Neighborhood Park. Jorgensen and Tiger Tree are two parks where we did hazard tree projects and a big canopy pruning project. A big part of those tree projects that we've been doing, we identify the hazards, but we also identify the trees in the park that need deadwood pruning and need end weight pruning so we can ensure that primarily the Douglas firs in our park system, which are struggling with climate change, they're not trying to maintain dying vegetation. So we give them a little health screening and give them a better shot at surviving the drier climate. So it's a big part of what I am focusing on when we're looking at priorities is providing shade, providing, like Rocky mentioned, shade in our playgrounds, but perhaps even things like non-reservable shade structures in our neighborhood parks. Can we afford to do that? Can we maintain them? Those sorts of conversations are ongoing. And then adding another splash pad to our park system. We only have one at Kleinline Regional Park and it's a long haul for some people who use it as a cooling center in the hotter parts of the summer. So we're exploring the opportunity to put another splash pad somewhere in the system.
Thank you very much.
Glenn, do you have any questions?
You know it. Thank you for being here. And I often forget, but I wanted to thank you for being in person, too. It's very helpful to see your faces and being hard at hearing it's helpful to be able to see and interact with you. And my apologies for being a few minutes tardy this morning, so it's possible I may have missed. Do we have a standard level of service that we have adopted? And if we do, it probably is different for each parks district, I would imagine, or can you?
Yes. See if I can get it off the top of my head. And if I'm off by a number, I apologize. So I believe our level of service is primarily on acreage based off a type. So for regional parks, I believe we have 10 acres per thousand is the level of service there. I believe there's a development level to that as well. For our Greater Clark Park District, our urban park system, we have six acres per thousand residents in the district. And that's broken down to 3, 2, 1, I believe. It's three acres of community parks, two acres of neighborhood parks, and one of urban natural areas. And so in of that, we try to have a percentage of that developed as well, I believe, as there's a sub-reference to that.
Okay. Do we have like a level of service map that kind of shows, I don't know?
In our PROS Plan, we do have a, we've done it two different ways in the PROS Map. So we did it from acreage. So we looked at each PIF district. So within the Greater Clark Park District, we have each PIF district, we've articulated based off of, here's the standard number of people in that area, what should the acreage be, where we're at. We've also looked at that from a letter grade sort of perspective. It's easier for me to know that I might get an F or a C or an A+. In addition, we did, for future planning, we did a heat map. So we looked at where, we sort of have a service area, so sort of a quarter or half mile for neighborhood parks, one to three miles for community parks. And we sort of looked around it to see where, within those PIF districts and within the Greater Clark Park District, where we have gaps. We took an additional layer with the GIS unit, so we looked at where housing and future housing is planned. So if we had industrial zones, we weren't looking to try to place a park. We didn't want a big red heat map saying we need a park in the middle of an industrial park. We're trying to put it where people live. And so we worked with the GIS unit to kind of have that overlay in there to kind of identify. And so with that, that's helped us through our future acquisitions of property as well as our development. And so one of the things we continue to look at and refine as we move forward is having another heat map that looks at those that are undeveloped and how that impacts. So we may own the property, but it's not developed and so still not creating that. In the PROS Plan, we identified as well as we have several properties that we manage, but we may not own, and they weren't considered in that heat map. And so that's something we're looking to revisit for the next PROS Plan as well as our system planning now. So those are, we have school properties, that we have a neighborhood park that's on school property and is a neighborhood park. We have HB Fuller, which we lease or have a sublease on that operates as a community. So we have several properties like that, as well as we have 97 parcels inside the Greater Clark Park District that are legacy lands that are serving as natural areas. And so those are the sort of things that we were wanting to review and kind of look at again as we kind of continue to move forward in determining where we're looking to acquire new property and where we're developing or improving the assets we have. Then we overlay that with the demographic data through our, sort of our rubric in regards to underserved communities on a lot of different criterias to help us determine when to do or where to do project. Through that process, for example, Mini Haha property was really low down on the list historically in regards to us developing that as a new neighborhood park. But through that process, it rose to be very high on our list. And actually, now we're going through the master planning and developing that asset that we had that now will meet an underserved community in an area that has a community park fairly close, but it's still not a real walkable way to get up to.
So thank you for that. I appreciate that. And just being that you just gave this to me, I mean, is this kind of the chart showing the different districts and where we are at compared to our standard level of service?
As of April 2022, yes.
Okay. Great. So we've got a couple of days. That's good. And we have some work to do. So my next question would be, with the level of funding that we are dedicating to parks at this point, do we have a method to get to a better level of service? Are we planning for that or are we just kind of planning based on what is currently budgeted? What is the end goal, the desire?
Sure. So we're trying to collect data a couple of different ways. And so in the PROS Plan, we looked at our level of service in regards to staffing, dollars, acres, and compared it to, through National Park Service data nationwide and other similar park systems and kind of looked at where we stand there. The nutshell is we have a lot more acres than most park systems that are like ours and a lot fewer people and dollars. So that's, so we took that as a standing point, looking at as we move forward, as we're developing new parks, trying to make sure that we're addressing that people, you know, the management, the operations side of it as we move forward to make sure we're not just building, but we're also trying to factor that in. We've, we're under process and that's another work session coming our way. I believe it's been submitted and whether it gets on the agenda in late '23 or '24 is looking at our fees programs. So we have sort of two mechanisms within our park systems of individual fees. So sometimes they call it a pay-to-play, but it's a parking fees, field rental fees, shelter fees, special use fee programs. We looked at, we've done an analysis of that with our Parks Advisory Board and staff and they've made some recommendations that we're moving forward to you to review and to consider in regards to that. So that's sort of that, that side of the thing. With our finance team, we have a forecast, a funding forecast that goes out for six years, looking at our current expenditures as well as those future things that we're planning to do. So as we're bringing on new parks, we're trying to add, oops, add in, can't speak with my hands much, I need to stop, the operational costs associated with that. So we're working at that and looking at that forecast. So as we make every budget decision as we move forward, and that would reflect sort of the levy for the MPD parks. That levy rate was set at 27 cents per thousand back when it was approved in 2005. It's currently somewhere between 16 and 14 cents per thousand now, based off of the 1% that it's allowed to go up versus house prices going up. So it's sort of based off that budget. So that, right now, we appear to be good for the next six years in regards to our current spending. We are spending more out of reserves and we have a fairly large reserve. It was at 10 and I think it's getting closer to 8 million in the MPD budget. Alternatively, we're looking at our general fund allocations as well, and that's the other allocation so that we can't have any one fund benefit another. And so those are all processes that go through the annual budgeting process with you and with our finance staff and the other finance teams as well as moving forward. So I think as we move forward, it appears that that's something we're continuing to discuss and it is of a concern to make sure that we can continue to meet those future needs. But there would be several conversations with you and the public as we move forward to determine whether or not, what those solutions are. And so I think we're just trying to look at, collect the data and look at the different options so that as we come forward, there is some data and some information to help make those determinations.
Okay, that was a very long answer, but didn't really give me my answer.
I'm sorry.
So I guess very simply stated, so if we follow this capital improvement plan as it is, how much, if any, of the gaps is it going to fill in some of the deficits in our system? It will, Counselor Young, it will address some of the gaps. It won't turn an F to an A, because we do prioritize where we're developing new facilities based on the grading that's in the PROS Plan. As we mentioned at the outset, as a reminder, the PROS Plan tees up the prioritization process for the development of our capital plan. So we use that as one of the primary sources of evaluation information. So we have criteria to prioritize things. And so Curtain Creek is going to be developed in '25. It's in an underserved area from the community, from the community park category. And so we're developing it to try and address that level of surface deficiency. The challenge is if we don't have property in those areas and we can't compete to acquire properties in those areas, we won't be successful in addressing some of those level of service Generally speaking, the development of the parks isn't the primary governor gear on what we can and can't do. It's primarily capacity. We, as a planning and development team, can only bring so many things to construction and then as and development team, can only bring so many things to construction, and then as an operations crew, they can only maintain so many things. And so, we need to work, and we regularly work with our operations partners to make sure that we're not bringing things to the system that they can't maintain, and that we're getting construction quality out of our construction process. So, they're not inheriting things that, that are already going to be challenging for them. And that's, that's not been easy in this, in this COVID environment over the last three projects. We've worked really hard to try and make sure we're getting good projects on the ground. So.
Did that help?
Yeah.
Better than my present, my, my long?
No, no. I appreciate all the information you gave. It just was very kind of, not quite what I was looking for, but it helped. So, you know, what I would be interested in, in the future is kind of, and I don't know what capacity you have to do this, but I would appreciate us having a, like a, you know, a little bit more in-depth discussion about what is our, you know, what does our current level of service look like throughout the county? Where are those major deficits that we have? And what would an ideal situation look like? How do we get there? You know, what would it take? How many years? What type of investment? What kind of funding would we have to find somehow for that? Because I think parks are, are important for our community. But I do want it to be very holistic as well, too, and kind of, you know, take some of the, the local things into consideration. Like, I know that schools, unless you have like a memorandum of understanding or some sort of agreement, don't typically count as a park. But if they're being used as a park, we should consider that, so that we can spend money elsewhere where it really is, where there really is a park desert. But I would love to have a really comprehensive discussion about how the whole system is functioning, where our deficits are, and what it would take to fill those gaps. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Counselor Young, lucky for you, we will be updating the pros plan in the, in the future. Before you know it, we'll be back here having level of service conversations, and we'll be sharing public feedback from, from, from our pros plan processes. So, there's a, there's a conversation that will be had.
Great. Sounds good. Thank you.
Michelle, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
I don't see you. I don't. I miss your vision.
Lots of discussion.
Go ahead. Do you have some questions?
Yes, I do. When I was recently at the Mini Haha Parks meeting, they, I could have sworn the Hazel Dell Park was discussed and that there was going to be some improvements. Is that still the case? I don't think that I saw that on the list of improvement projects.
Counselor Belkot, if you look at the last page on the, well, the last table in the draft plan, in the stewardship capital improvement project, it's table 3.01. Hazel Dell Community Park renovation is in there. We're currently in the process of engaging the public in a conversation about what sort of improvements the community would like to see at that location. This project had its beginnings in a desire on, on our part and others that predated our time here to improve the accessibility at the park. As you might know, the parking lot is dirt, and there's not accessible transition from the parking lot to the, the shelter right by the, by the parking lot. And then, there's a, there's no accessible route to the bathroom. So, we started out looking at just paving the parking lot, but then making accessibility improvements. And it's just become an important, an important project. And so, I believe we have a, we've had a survey out. I believe we had four, 300 or 400 people participate in the survey, complete the online survey, and we're getting ready to have our first public meeting to talk about the, not only the public access improvements, but there's five acres of that property that are, are not developed, and that we're looking at what we, what we might do on those five acres as well.
Thank you for that. That's a great turnout on surveys. So, that's good to hear. Thank you so much. I appreciate that update.
You're welcome. Was that it, Michelle?
Yes, it is, Counselor Medvee. Thank you.
Thank you. I've already scratched off some of the topics I wanted to bring up, just because of trying to share time with my fellow counselors. So, this is a harder conversation. And, you know, it kind of gets back to our, our charter and the relationship between the council and, and executive and subordinate staff, if you will. So, my comments remain that, you know, I'm just in awe of the depth and breadth of the work you do. But, you know, we could spend an hour talking about Camp Bonneville and where we're at, and why we're not at a different place at this point in time. I know there's a lot of challenges. I know them really well. And so, I was heartened by at least the one bullet that you're talking to the equestrian community, because, man, what a potential for an equestrian center of excellence there from trails. And the fact that, you know, there's, there are trail expertise within that community that would save the county $100,000 on a consultant by just giving them the project and say, "Design it for us," and then they'll give us a product that probably you could implement. So, I'm, I'm at least heartened to see that, and, but I'm going to skip Camp Bonneville. But it's kind of just another example of kind of bumping along. So, as a citizen, one of the first things I started paying attention to was heritage, and the fact that there was so much effort, open houses in the paper, like every week. And then, nothing. And so, I want to say that was about 2017, 2018. And, and the reason why I bring that up is because public outreach is so important. And if you mention some of the other examples here, and, and we just had a recent example with 179th. Oh, my God. It was, 179th was in the paper every week. And then, when things start to move forward a little bit more, then the public comes up and goes, "Well, I just moved here. I didn't know anything about it." Or, "I lived here. Nobody called me, so I don't know anything about it." It was like, all that public outreach in 2019 was just a wash. You know, everybody forgot about it. So, heritage. You know, I guess fundamentally, you know, we make very few decisions here. And heritage is something I really dug into early on, after reading so much about it and then joining the council. I was hoping for real progress. And the main points I want to make is, oh my God, 10, 2010, we had a capital plan, 10-year capital plan. Do you think you're on track with that? And then, we, we went through some machinations, 2019, 2020, to get, I mean, it took a while to get the next 10-year capital plan in place. And I'm not so clear that we're doing anything to further that. You know, back in 2019, I, I thought the, the wetland enhancement project was done. And now, I'm seeing we're putting off trails for another two years until that's done. I don't know why that, why that decision was made to sequence things in that way. But since 2010, we've had a lot of different councils. I mean, we went from three to five, a big change, you know, from Moulton Stewart was probably the beginning of all of that outreach, outreach, and let's do something with, with heritage. And, and then we had a change in 2019, when I came on board, and Temple Lenz came on board. We joined at that time. Then there was another change, and now we have this brand-new council here. But the, the main, when we were really digging into Heritage Farm, the main points were coming out, and things that I saw personally, was that we didn't have a manager that was really coordinating all the activities there. You know, WSU, all these stovepipe consortiums of, this is my property, you know, from WSU Extension in our historic building, controlled access, very limited public access, except for their programs. You have a chain link fence with barbed wire on the top at the, at the parking lot. So, unless you're using the, the community gardens, or you're part of the experimental work that's going on there, the public doesn't have access. And I, and I appreciate the point of view of that one writer that said, "Don't open it up because there's active farming. You don't want the public there." I got it. I mean, it's valuable input, and we have had that, some vandalism, and we've had some thefts. You know, it's, it's just a reality. And, but, you know, I understood there were some internal machinations between the Public Works Director, and this is like three directors ago, and Parks and Lands. You know, who's going to manage this? I don't know who's managing it today. But some simple things like composting. Oh, yeah, composting at a farm. You know, the farm in general was doing some composting. Community Gardens was doing some composting. WSU does a lot of work with composting and, and extension courses, and none of it was coordinated and working together. It was all fragmented. And Community Gardens, the last I saw, you know, we had a huge waitlist, although we have acres of unused land there. I also found abandoned properties, you know, that basically the little garden plots weren't being used. Some, some users had multiple plots, while other people couldn't get one. And I'm like, okay, a management issue. That could be decided and changed immediately. So, the other part of the central focus of, of the councils that I've sat on over the last five years was focused on a manager. Let's get a manager in charge of all of the disparate activities, which are all great, but could be better coordinated and have better access to, to that acreage business plan. We had a couple of false starts. We, I think universally, we're trying to have less of a draw in the general fund and more sustainability, knowing that we had a lot of potential there for it to be sustainable. So, the upshot of that is the council said, "We need a business plan." False starts, false starts, not getting a business plan. Then WSU Extension volunteered to come up with a business plan. I saw the draft. Is it in place? Did we need to vote on it? Is it operating right now? I don't know. You know, back in December, I brought up the idea of a, okay, well, let's make one decision to move forward. Let's conserve it for farm use and take off the table. You know, we had some discussion of putting homeless shelters in there. We had some discussion of putting some commercial activity in the northeast corner. Let's put all that to rest. If we're going to conserve it, let's conserve it as farm use. And so, I would have thought that, I don't know what Sue Marshall thinks, or Glenn Young, my, my other two counselors, Michelle Belkot and Chair Bowerman. I, I don't know if there are three votes to conserve it. I would hope so. But I would think, okay, well, let's put it before the council. As a policy decision, do you want to do that? And then, the paperwork should be pretty easy. It's now October. That still hasn't come for a decision before the council. And so, pretty soon, we're, we'll see the council change again, and maybe there'll be a different thought process. You know, quite frankly, you know, there was at least one counselor that became chair a few years ago that wanted the commercial development, wanted to put real estate, develop, you know, sell it off. Let's get some homes in there. I, I disagree with that. You know, and at, at the Parks Advisory Commission, I had brought up, and at different meetings here, I brought up, oh, my God, Columbia Springs, what a great model. You know, they, the last figure I saw, they had about 30,000 people in the public come through there to be educated, including the schools. Great partnership with the schools, with the hatchery, with the city. And that small sliver of property at the hatchery is precious, and it's educational. And, you know, imbues in our youngest the relationship of our watershed, fish recovery, you name it. I don't know that we have anything. At one point, one briefing we had here bragged about, well, we had 2,000 or 3,000 come through Heritage Farm. You know, oh, my gosh, really. Let's look at Columbia Springs, because what a great model to build partnerships and get the, the farming community to really maximize the acres we have out there. I know we've had some issues with the incubator farm program. I'm not sure where we're at with that, but I don't want to discuss it today. But boy, that would have been a, a great program to have launched successfully. So, public access without disrupting WSU's research and the garden plots. It can coexist. We can have a trail. I don't know. I guess the question is, how do we get to this 10-year plan that we, we keep approving, and 10 years after, 10 years after, 10 years, nothing much changes there? And by the way, it was kind of irksome to see that chain link fence where the, along the side was, where the neighbors just put in their own little passageway. They've got little walkways to access personally. And, and we certainly see those stovepipes, you know, this is my, my heritage farm. Leave it alone. So, where are we with the manager? Where are we with the business plan? Where, why are we delaying the trail access until after we fit, finish the wetlands? You know, putting it off another two years, we'll have a whole nother council.
Just if I could ask a clarifying question. Did you say that you've actually seen a draft business plan from Wazoo?
They emailed it out quite.
There was a, it was, it's not the business plan. It's their, their research they did through the Metropolitan Center.
So, the, so the business plan is not complete, because I think the last update that I had, I mentioned with council, it was going to be done by the end of the year. Is that still on track?
Yes.
Okay.
So, the business plan is not complete, that?
Yeah. The last update I had, that I had received from Public Works was they were planning on having it done by the end of this year.
Yeah. So, my point is, I know everything takes time, but, oh, my Lord, does it take this much time? And can we, and if we have decisions to make, let's make them. And if we don't have decisions to make, go do your thing. But in the meantime, some of the decisions we've made, I'd like to see actually put in place.
Counselor Medvee, I, I share your passion for the topic. I will, as a point of clarification, the work that WSU did was more of an evaluation of some other facilities and how those facilities function, and then identified some next steps in the development of a business plan. But it didn't, it didn't, it didn't round out a plan for the, the farm moving forward. And so, that's what we've taken on with the planning and development staff and the steering committee that we've met with on several occasions over the last several months. One hopeful comment is that the last time we met with the steering committee, we went through a visioning exercise, for lack of a better term, where we compiled all of the, the potential uses of the farm and potential revenue generation opportunities that could occur at the farm that were, those two lists were built by that steering committee. The steering committee is represented by members, a member of the Heritage Farm Advisory Team, folks from the food bank, folks from the general community. And we went through an exercise where we, we built our, individually or as a group, they either grouped up or they developed their own sort of vision for the farm, for what, what elements would be at the farm, and what revenue generation opportunities would they employ at the farm if they were, if they were given the, the keys to the castle, for lack of a better term. By and large, we, we discovered through analyzing six or seven different sort of versions of Heritage Farm programmatically, that there's a lot of agreement on what sorts of things. Heritage Farm programmatically, that there's a lot of agreement on what sorts of things this group of people would like to see, and it's 13 or 14 people, and we're, and that's the, that's that agri-park model that, that Rocky mentioned earlier. It would be similar to a number of properties that we've evaluated in our, in our process, Lusher Farms down in Lake Oswego, I believe, Toalton Parks and Rec, and other farm-type parks. And we're moving forward with the analysis of the, the three, the op, three options, and we'll be bringing a, a preferred option back to council. Again, probably next year, given the, given the council agenda over the next several months, and then our, our need to close the loop with the steering committee with, with our draft plan. We've, we're, we're reviewing it internally right now. So, with regards to the trail, there, there are opportunities to move forward with some capital improvements at, at Heritage Farm, at a different location that would not impact the, the permitting timeline and the permitting success for the wetland. Our initial thought was that we would capitalize on the construction of the wetland as an interpretive element, as an educational element, with our first capital improvement there, and so that's why we're, we're getting in line, so we can, so we can seamlessly do it with that, with that project. But we, if the coun, if the council chooses to look for other opportunities, or direct us to look for other opportunities to make some access improvements there, that's the council's pleasure, and we can avoid the development we were planning to do on both sides of the Curtain Creek, Cougar Creek corridor, excuse me, and in the northeast corner, which is where our first planned public access improvement would, would be.
Yeah, so I'd be all in favor of a phased approach, and
Yes.
And having that crossing or the capital improvement in the wetland
Yes.
After the wetlands done, but opening, I mean, there's a lot of acreage there, there's a lot of opportunity, there's a park on the other side, I mean, there's to connect to, there's lots of opportunity right now.
Yeah, and we're exploring those opp, sorry to interrupt you, Counselor. We are exploring those connection opportunities from Hazeldale Park as well, as you know that they share boundaries, and we're going through the conversation with the Heritage Farm Advisory Team on how that works, and how we secure the farm operations, and from, from theft and vandalism, and the public, from the dangers associated with mixing farm operations and, and recreation. So, it's been done in numerous places in the past, we have lots of people that we can talk to to find out what they've learned, what they would and wouldn't do moving forward. So, we're, we're working those network opportunities we can to learn those things when we're
Thank you for all that, and I do look forward, I'm not sure where it sits right now, if, if it's with the PA or where, on the conservation easement, so I can see if my fellow counselors support it.
Counselor Medvee, Leslie Lopez, just to let you know, our office has been working on that, and actually, DPA Kevin McDowell has drafted, so we'll be talking with staff about that.
Last comments, please.
Just if I could follow up, I, I've been involved with Heritage Farm for a number of years, and I, I think respecting the steering committee's process would be good to follow through with the work that they've done, and I think there's, it started out, I think, with some distrust, because there was fear that it was going to be developed, that there had been threats of development before, so I think a delay has been partly as a result of the community not knowing what was going on, and some level of distrust. But, and I do wonder, just to follow up specifically on the conservation easement, if that could be a component that we could look at sooner than later, because I don't see that it would interrupt any of the planning that is going on, it would just be to assure that the property is conserved for farm and park use.
I believe that is the one that Leslie just referred to, that's been drafted by her office, and will be coming back soon.
And Counselor Medvee, Matt Baum is the name of the manager who's overseeing the farm. So, back in 2019, when you came on board, it was under a program coordinator who also managed legacy lands and some other programs, and so we have elevated it up. We've also changed our infrastructure, because it was someone who was managing people, Camp Bonneville and the farm, and so we've separated Camp Bonneville and the farm to increase people power for that. So, Matt Baum, or another one of our managers, is on site, I'd say three, at least three out of the five business days a week, and is engaging with things. It is a slow process, I agree with you, and, and in regards to your fence, we did have an issue with a redwood tree, so there was a piece of fence that was from that redwood tree in front of the administration building. I believe that fence is gone, or is being removed, because it has now started creating a safety issue. There were some concerns that that was going to change the safety for the site, but that whole side of the operation is open to the public, so we did have some of those discussions. So, I, I echo that there is a place for fence in, in certain locations for security of the yard, and sort of the maintenance and things like that, but it is, it doesn't, doesn't give us the, the right message to the community.
Thank you.
So, Glenn, you have?
Just one follow-up based on some of your comments. I was wondering, my impression was that we had given, I mean, that we had had a majority of the council direct towards moving towards an easement, is that right?
Again, that's what Leslie.
Oh, that's what that was about, I missed that little detail. Okay, I was wondering what that was about, thank you.
Yeah, so, we will bring that back when, when it's ready for, for review.
Super. So, I think that concludes the work session, does it not? Thanks for all that detail, and keep doing great and wondrous things for our community with our parks.
The only thing, we don't usually take notes or minutes during this meeting, but I just wanted to follow the rules of procedure and just note that Chair Berman is out with an excused absence, so I just wanted to state that for the record for this morning.
So, anything further? Otherwise, we have our council time at 1:00 today on our newly adopted schedule. So we'll go ahead and adjourn the work session, thank you.
Thanks everyone for your time.
Thank you for your time.